All of you here with us today. And we're going to open our meeting today by asking Pastor Michael Jackson, Pastor Competence, Baptist Church will come and lead us in prayer. Then we're going to ask you all to join us in the Plaids of Allegiance. Let us all stand.
Let us pray. Gracious internal God, our Father, Lord, we come before your presence right now again to say thank you, God, for today. We thank you now for our mayor and our council and thank you for our great city. We asking tonight, God, as we come together to intervene, God, that you guide us and direct us, God, even be with us in our decision making. And now, God, we asking that you continuously be with our mayor and to continuously lead and guide him, put ahead your protection all around him, God. We thank you now, God, for all who are gathered here. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Plaids of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to this is a flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so very much, Pastor Jackson. We've all been given copies of our last few minutes, January night.
You got a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor of us? God proposes by the same sign, I have it so carried. We're going down to delegations now. Ms. Denson from 113 Royal Court, is she in the building? Please come forward, state your name and your purpose for being here.
My name's Kiara Denson. My purpose here is just trying to get some understanding. More of a situation that's ongoing in the community with my housing. Basically, I have dealt with unsettled conditions, not roofs leaking, I cannot get it fixed. I have documentation where I have asked. Some of this has been going on for three years now. And I can't get it done. I'm just at a loss and not sure where to go.
You have a problem with the landlord repairing it?
Yes.
Okay, have you called out code enforcement?
Yes. I was actually told that you guys, the code enforcement, the City of LaGrange is not responsible for mold. Ashley certified someone who specialized. I have them coming out tomorrow, which I will be paying out of my own pocket to get this done. This, the house that I am living in, I actually got eviction notice to say that I have 60 days to get out after the code enforcement came out. And I'm not behind on my rent. I always pay my rent on time, every month on time. And I feel like it's retaliation because I'm asking you to fix up my house. Like I said, I've been there five years and this is an ongoing issue. And I can't seem to get anything done.
Okay, all right. Code enforcement is in the house. Could you come forth, please, and give us some explanation on that? Yes?
On January 10th, I responded to Ms. Denson's property at 113 Royal Court. She complained of a roof leaking, the heating unit not working, some electrical issues with some lights, and some moisture issues due to, I guess, the leaking roof. And right after I left her, I got in contact with Mr. Stephen Edelson, who owns the property, explained to him everything that was going on, and he scheduled to meet with Ms. Denson and have his maintenance man come out. And his maintenance man has the documentation here listing everything that was a brief problems, the work performed, him fixing the electrical issues, HVAC. He has a roofing company coming next week to work on the roof. And he's already putting new gutters up as we speak. I went by today and looked at the property. And he fixed the lighting and the heat and had Ms. Denson's signature and the date on here, so if anybody needs to see this. And so she was aware of the things he fixed. And today, whenever I went by and I re-inspected, there were two gentlemen on the property. They stated that, yeah, the heat had been done, the lights had been fixed, they showed me the new gutters. And he stated that the week of the 29th, which is next week, that the roofers were supposed to be coming out putting a new roof on the property. So that's all I know.
And so you signed for that, Ms. Denson?
The thing is, we have to sign. When he comes out, I actually got text message where I told him I didn't feel comfortable signing because the work wasn't done. He said it's just saying they come out. Far as the heating and light, none of that was checked, as I told the people who was there picking my sign up. I have to sign everything before they fix. I even made him aware. I said, I'm not comfortable. Why do I have to sign? It's not done. This looked like it's saying it's complete. And he was like, no, it's saying I'm coming out. And I have text message where I was like, can I get a copy? Because it don't sound right if I'm signing for something and the work's not done. Why am I putting my signature on a complete work order?
How much in depth do you all go to find out if the work has been completed?
We could physically go back in the property, but nobody, the front door was closed and they were leaving whenever I came up. Witnessed the gutters and asked the gentleman there, you know, everything they're taking care of, and they stated that they had.
I know we have no jurisdiction over making someone do anything other than making sure it's safe. That's why we have a code enforcement, to make sure that everything is safe. It sounds like your landlord is willing to do something to do that. So could we schedule a lot of time to go and check and make sure that work has been done?
May I speak, Honorable Mayor, before we get done?
All right.
Please. Keyword, she ain't never been late on her rent. Half of the time, when people speak out and say something, they always saying, well, they stopped paying the rent. They ain't paying on time, so they're why they fixing nothing. Three years, this girl ain't never been late on her rent. I have been to that house. That roof is leaking and it's leaking so bad that it has started to seep down the walls because the walls are buckling in on the house. So it probably got mold and everything all the way into this though. I went to the closet. When I went to the closet, he sent a maintenance man over there. The maintenance man fell through the roof and left big old holes in her ceiling and didn't even even fix it and left it just like that. So there are roofs, there's holes all in the ceilings of that home. You know anything about energy efficiency? You know the more air leaks that you have in your home, the more, the more usage that your HVAC system or heating system is going to have to use, which in turn drives up your utility bill. She already paying $800 a month for that raggedy, deplorable house. And then the light bill will be another $400 or $500 on top of that. I came to the council even before I was a member here, and I talked about housing several times. I'm not against nobody that owns houses. Nobody owns houses. Good to you, good to you. I just purchased my first one. I hope I'm going to be a good landlord, and I am. But there has to be some sense of ordinance or something that we can do to stop these slumlord for letting people live in these deplorable conditions. And then when they speak up in retaliation, you get eviction notice. I seen the eviction notice. It has nothing on the why she has to move. And it is a straight retaliation because she decided to speak up against him and those deplorable conditions in that home. I don't know what we can do as a council or as a city. I want to get me to on that Jeff. I talked to you about it a long time ago. He came up with nothing. But there's got to be something that we can do to put some checks and balances on slumlords.
There's nothing we can do about this situation. That has become a civil offense right now. So you've got to take him to court with that if these things are correct. Once again, the only thing the city can do is make sure that the safety is there. And so he's going to come back out to make sure that everything has been done for your safety. Now, anything else, we have no ordinances to say that our landlord cannot evict anyone. We have no ordinance to say that. Only thing we have to do now is say to you, your steps would be taken to the civil court, and we can't do anything. Ask be civil. Anything?
May I, may I?
Yes.
Address something? It's actually illegal for us to get involved. Your situation is a civil contract. I think, Mr. Todd, if you talk to him about it, he can explain to you between, you know, the difference between contracts. That is a civil contract, a contract between two parties. What the city does have the power to do is authorize an authority, such as the Housing Authority, to create good viable housing for the community. We can't do that as the city. That's why we created Housing Authority, and that is their, that's their wheelhouse. That's the workaround that the state of Georgia and many other states throughout this union have to address the housing issues on behalf of the government. With that being said, has anyone from Public Housing reached out to you or have you reached out to them?
The thing is about Public Housing, Public Housing was actually two, three, two years ago, he recruited them, Ashley hired them to come in and fix the house. But because of their pricing and because he does not want to pay that price, he...
No, he's speaking of the Housing Authority. He's asking, has the Housing Authority contacted you or tried to support you?
Yes.
That's what he's asking.
Yes.
Good, good. Hopefully, they, you know, you'll be able to work something out with them and they can, you could take advantage of. Our remedy that we have for the housing problems is through the Housing Authority. Again, because the city of LaGrange can't do anything legally, there is a workaround that was created called the Housing Authority. And they can do something in the communities to make housing available and keep it on a certain level of acceptance for the community. But I understand your pain, I understand your sufferance. I understand it totally. But a lot of people think, and even some of my fellow council members think, that the government can do something about it. And it is, it is very difficult. In order for that to happen, it would have to change on the state level.
Housing, the Housing Authority has tried to come to this council several times to give them the power to be able to exercise their powers to do stuff on governing and having checks and balances on these slumlords, but to no avail.
And I'm not going to get into that, that part.
I will ask you, Mr. Jeff Todd.
Asking you to work with the Housing Authority.
Let us have, let us have order.
He just said itself that the Housing Authority with this house...
Mr. Charles.
Yes, sir.
I have just called on.
Yes, sir.
All right. If you would, because we do have the authority to red flag a house. If you would go out and see if that work has been done, if not, red flag that house. Thank you so very much.
Now, please keep this in mind. If you red flagged that house, you can't stay there.
I got, I don't have nowhere to go. This is the same house, I hate to say it, the people before me said the same thing happened to them with mold, with the situation. I have reached out, I have been more than patient on this man with his... My house got held, that's been over a year ago. It leaks bad. So the moment I stepped, a lot of people wouldn't do it. Because when we step out, we get told, and which I had this happen before, I got the same thing. So how can we make something better? And I work in realty. I lease apartments. So I pride myself on my community and make sure they get stuff done. But it's bad when I'm doing the same thing that he does, but you don't care. And then when we come, no offense to the councilman, but when we come, we still get told, hey, there's nothing we can do. You had to take it to court. Don't have the type of money to take it to court. I'm spending $368 out of my pocket I don't have to come and get mold treated or to even get it tested because he like, I don't know. It's frustrating. And we can't afford to live in outside. I overqualify for housing. I can't do it.
I advise our staff to be cautious when you red flag that house, that there's a probability you're exacerbating the situation. But that's all I have to say about that.
I feel you. I appreciate your coming. Once again, as you just heard, we just, there's just so much we can do. But we can red flag houses, and then that house will never be able to be rented again unless it's thoroughly inspected. So I appreciate you coming once again. And, but that's a civil offense, so you can take that up with the courts.
Is there any way you're able to stay in one of the units that you manage with the property that you own?
No, I don't even qualify for them because duh. I don't know if anybody knows about the City of LaGrange. A lot of people are roommates. The cost of living is very high, but the pay is not there. Like I told my owner, the company, I work for you guys and I don't qualify to even get apartment here. Something wrong with that. The only reason we stay because we feel trapped. We don't speak out because look what happened to me when I just said, hey, can you fix this? I've been patient for a year with my roof leaking, not counting the holes. That's been back in 2021. I have pictures still there. Can't sleep on my pillow because it's mold. I have a child who has severe health issue, can't even really be at my house. She can't be at her own home. So we're stuck in a community where they buy up houses and they are actually, they're slumlords. And then we don't know where to go.
Yeah, but thank you, Ms. Denson. We appreciate your coming. All right, Horace King Street, Mr. Perrino?
Perrino?
My name is Justin Perrano, and I bought these properties about a month ago. And I buy houses, I fix them up, and I either resell them or rent it out, you know. That's the business I'm in. I buy properties and make good quality properties to rent out in the City of LaGrange. And I'm running an issue where I'm having trouble subdividing this parcel. There's two houses on one parcel, and I want to subdivide them. But it's not meeting enough square footage. I made two out of three qualifications. It runs 800 square feet short of it. And this is not the only property. There's other properties I've been offered, like there's one on 508 DeGrasse that was offered as well, too. It has the same issue. There's other properties in the area that, you know, have the exact same issue. And the issue I'm also running across is the banks, they won't refinance me out if I fix these properties. If I put all my money into these properties, make them good quality properties, either to rent out or to sell on the market to, you know, affordable, to affordable people, the banks aren't willing to refinance me out. So I got to have all my money stuck there. And I can't, I can't do anything with these properties because I can't subdivide them. And I just want to see if you guys can help me out and help me subdivide these properties.
Okay, we, Mark, could you come up and, he explained this to us this morning, maybe he can explain it to you again. We have ordinances where a lot has to be a certain size. And so it's not, it doesn't meet that requirement.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As we discussed this morning during the work session, sir, as we discussed during our telephone conversation on January the 17th, you had closed on four different properties in LaGrange on or about the 7th and 15th. After closing on the properties, I was contacted by a campaign associate and their representative too indicated that the properties could not be subdivided because the property, even though it has two homes on it, is only 5,200 square feet. In which time, I shared with you that in accordance with our zoning regulations, in order to subdivide a property, three criteria have to be met. Minimum lot frontage of 40 feet, it has to meet our setback requirements, then the minimum lot size is 3,000 square feet. So, Ms. Robertson, if you go to the next slide, please. One of the things I discussed with the elected officials this morning is the fact that even under our old development regulations, which predate our unified development ordinance, which was adopted in June of 2021, we still didn't allow a minimum lot size of 3,000 square feet, or at least one that we quite frankly took advantage of. Recognizing that infield development opportunities certainly add value to our community, we elected to allow the smaller lot sizes. But at this point, even though we allow the smaller lot sizes, quite frankly, I think we can both agree that he still does not meet those for a variety of reasons. If you go to the next slide, please. As we also discussed during our telephone conversation on the 17th, our UDO is very clear as it relates to the issuance of the variance. It says that no variance shall be authorized to reduce, waive, or modify in any manner the minimum lot area established for the zoning ordinance in any zoning district. So that's why after our conver, or as a part of our conversation, you indicated that you wanted to speak with our elected officials concerning this matter. You know, once again, mayor and councilmember, as I indicated this morning, you know, our lot sizes have continuously gotten smaller, you know, from our previous development regulations to where we are now. However, this is the first time since we adopted the UDO that any developer or realtor or property owner has come before me on this council and asked me to be reduced even more.
And we've tried to do everything we possibly could to come to some type of resolve for your problem. Even one of the councilmen said something about tiny homes. And you would have to tear it down and then rebuild tiny homes on there for that to work. Other than that, we have no other way of clarifying or to clearing this up.
I understand, but the issue is also, you know, there's four houses on the same street. It's not just these two houses. If you go down the street, 508 DeGrasse has the same exact issue. And I was going to buy those houses, but I stepped back because the same issue.
Right.
So within a period of three, four months, these are slum type properties. I could have bought four houses, turned around, fixed them up, you know, afforded for affordability, for rentals, and for people to buy, but they're not. They're going to stay exactly the way they are. They're going to be more rundown in five to 10 years. It's going to bring the value, you know, it's going to devalue the neighborhood. But within three, six months, I can increase that. I was also offered over 100 properties in LaGrange, which has made me reconsider things. I mean, if I'm going to have issues with buying, purchasing, buying properties, refinancing out, and doing things like that, you know, why reinvest?
If I could cut you off just for a minute, he brings up a good point. This is a problem in these old communities. And I mean, these, how old is the Groke Street subdivision? More than 100 years old? And it was built kind of like haphazardly as the workforce desired it for the mill. Maybe we have to set precedent. Maybe we have to be, somehow think outside the box to deal with some of these old mill subdivisions. I'm not saying we do anything right now, and I'm not saying we got to help this one guy right here, but I'm just saying, we live in an old mill town, and we've got subdivisions all over the place, old subdivisions. And we're going to have to come up with something to help this situation. Because we've been in that, you know, like if you go over by Mitchell, was it Mitchell? Mitchell with the little shotgun houses.
Mitchell Avenue, yes, sir.
Mitchell Avenue with the little shotgun houses, which I can't, I can't imagine it meets any kind of code today.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, you know, we just, we got to come up with some sort of solution, and we're going to have to think outside the box. I appreciate you bringing this to us, but like you said, you've got the opportunity to purchase 100 properties out there. And the problem is, these houses are going to stay dilapidated until this body comes to some sort of conclusion of this is the direction we're going to go to make things better. And on a side note, there's a young lady back there that needs a place. If you could get with her and talk with her about what you have available, I would greatly appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll get with her.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Gass, the only thing I would say to that is that subdividing that lot does not, if we can't subdivide the lot, it still don't mean he can't fix the house up and rent it.
So, so yes.
Right.
No, it does. Because the banks are not willing to refinance me out because of the layout of the land and the properties. Now, if it was a duplex, they would. But since it's two separate houses on one parcel, the banks are not willing to refinance me out. So I don't have, I don't have the money to put into it and then get my money back so I can go on to the next project, to the next house and next house, and bring it up to value and then re-rent. So that's, that's the issue I'm having. If I could get my money back 100%, I wouldn't be here.
So what if you put an outdoor garden between the houses and called that a living space or open living space?
I want to do whatever it takes to...
Would the bank accept that?
It's going to have to go to the bank.
I can't stand that piece for me. If you can't handle getting your money out of one house to refinance, how you going to buy 100 houses?
Well, it's, when you're dealing with that, you're dealing with more with cat rates and NOIs. You're looking at it more as a commercial type investment versus dealing with one property. With one property, you're buying and you're getting rent, well, over 150, 100, 200 properties, you're looking more as an average income, expenses as well, too, like on a property like, something like that, you're dealing with $140,000 expenses per year. And on a property like this, you're dealing with $500, $1,000 expenses. So I mean, that's why I also want to bring to your attention, if I'm buying 100 properties in the area as well, there's going to be other situations regardless of this subdivision. There's going to be other, as I said, like, these are old houses with, you know, codes that are outdated. So it's not just looking at this one particular situation, it's also looking at the area and looking at what's outdated and what can we can work around besides, besides that.
We can't convince you to take out both of those houses and build a brand new house, a $120,000 house.
But the neighborhood doesn't have the value. If I try to sell a $150,000 house in that neighborhood, who's going to buy it when every other house is a slum? But if I bring up the whole neighborhood up to value, I put 10 houses in that neighborhood, the great value is going to be that somebody's going to be like, hey, I might move in there, you know?
You say a house or you rent a house over there?
Both.
Well, rent, build a house and rent over there. Then 10 hours, both of them, then rent a house over there.
So you want me to tear down the house? It was going to cost me 10, 20 grand to tear it out per house, right? Plus the cost of the house, then build a brand new house for $150,000. I mean, I'm just, I'm just trying to break down the cost so we both understand where we're at.
I got you, brother. I feel your pain.
Sounds like you have to go back to your bank, see if you all can work something out with your bank.
Well, I'm just saying, take, take a look at it and see if we can work, like, not just this code, but look at...
I mean, when, when we last looked at the ordinance, was that through the state or was that something that...
Oh, shit.
Our, our...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You know, it's a council's pleasure to do so. I'd be glad to work with our GIS staff to identify other lots within the city that have two primary structures on an individual lot. But I believe what I'm going to find is that that's going to be the exception rather than the rule.
Okay. And just, like I said, I'm just thinking outside the box. If, let's just say he put an outdoor garden and called it a living space and joined the two houses, and we said, okay, we now recognize this as a duplex. Question is, with the bank?
That's why he's going to go back to his bank and work with that.
That's correct. His best rate course is through his lender.
Okay. I mean, we're willing to work with you if we can.
Absolutely. That's all I'm asking. I'm not asking, hey, you know, forcibly do this for me. It's, it's not just going to be me. It's going to be other investors looking at this and saying, hey, is LaGrange this out of town investable? And they're going to say, no, it doesn't, it's not going to make sense for us to invest in this area. The houses are older, they have older regulations, I can't keep up.
And if nobody else has said this to you, I appreciate you investing in these communities. I really do. But like I said, you know, we're going to have to be more, I guess, creative.
I will close with this. We've got a couple different builders here in range, one of which is RG Construction, who does do his due diligence, unlike in this case, who identifies lots that are sufficiently large enough to be subdivided. And when he does that, his expenses demolishes the home that is on the property, if there is one, and comes back and rebuilds two brand new cottage style homes that are approximately 1,000 to 1,100.
Is that what he did up on Callaway Avenue?
That's the reason the process is doing, yes, sir.
Is that lot compatible size?
No, that lot is larger because he did his due diligence and was able to be subdivided.
How about we put him in touch with that guy and maybe they can get together and work out something?
Maybe they're probably competitors. I'd be glad to...
I mean, sometimes, I mean, do you, are you against talking to somebody else and getting advice?
No, I'm, I'm creative. Like I said, I'm, I'm open to whatever solutions there are.
Mr., yes, I think the best thing...
I've taken up time, I'm sorry.
The best thing for him to do is go back to your bank and see if we can work out with them.
Okay.
That's our ordinance, we can't change it right now.
Okay. When you say now, run out now, do you mean not at all or maybe some...
No, right now, we, we may have discussed this in retreat and see exactly what we can come up with in retreat. That time, that will give you enough time to check with some things.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Frank Shepherd, feeding... All right, Mr. Frank Shepherd of Feeding the Valley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thanks for having me here. My name is Frank Shepherd, I'm president and CEO of Feeding the Valley Food Bank. Our food bank covers 18 counties, going from Troup County in LaGrange, south to Albany. We have served the area for 40 years now. I'd like to give you a little bit of an update on the work we're doing and the work we're going to be doing in the future in this area. First of all, the reason is the need. In this area, one in five children are chronically hungry, what we call food insecure. One in six people overall, 11,000 people roughly in Troup County that are food insecure. So there are a lot of reasons for that, those numbers are surging because of the post pandemic factors, as well as rampant inflation, which is causing families to have to spend a lot more money on rent, utilities and other matters, and thankfully, we are here to help out with food. Speaking of surging rent, our situation has changed here. We leased a facility on Gordon Commercial Drive for 10 years. When the lease was up though, the rent was going to go up about 125%. We didn't feel that was the best use of the funds we were stewarded with. So, but we are committed to staying in the community. We have leased another smaller facility that's being worked on and is going to keep us in the area. We know that a metropolitan area is much better served with a food source right here in the middle of it, rather than to do so from a distance away. So we are continuing on that work. Now, our commitment is to be a food bank provider for people in need here in this community long term. And our vision for the future is to build a facility that's going to be a food bank that will effectively serve members of this community for many years. And we're beginning that process now. We want to build a facility that's got the right amount of cold storage for healthy lean meats, fresh fruits, vegetables, as well as dry storage, to get as much food in the community and then out to people in need as possible. We're looking at investing between five and six million dollars in the community to do this, and we're beginning the spec work on that. We have a lease on this current facility for three years, an option for a fourth. By the time we're done, we want to be able to make sure we can move out of this facility and into a brand new food bank that's really going to make an impact on the community. A little bit about the programs we operate. We have a food distribution program we call Mobile Pantry at about eight different sites throughout the four counties in this area. Our trucks go every month, give families in need 60 pounds of food, to include frozen meats, fresh fruits, vegetables. Box and can goes designed to be a once a month supplement to help them make ends meet and, and stretch their budgets. We have a partner agency distribution program. We work with nonprofits, churches and other nonprofit facilities, community centers and the sort who come to us and get food and then help people in their local communities. They know where the pockets of need are much better than we do. So allows us to distribute a lot more food. And then we have a, what we call a buddy pack program where children in need, the most chronically hungry, receive a backpack full of 10 to 12 kid friendly but nutritious items on Friday afternoon to take home to have food to get them through the weekend. We know there are kids that will not eat the entire weekend and we're here to make sure that that, that doesn't happen. We have one partner, Good Sam Ministry, that distributes 450 of those every month to children in need in, in the local elementary schools. We feel we're uniquely, uniquely equipped to bring nonprofits together because of that partner agency model. So many of the nonprofits come to us to get food. We work with them on the issues that they have, as well as them helping with the issue that we have. And as LaGrange grows and faces the challenges that come with that, now we want city council to think of Feeding the Valley as their partner and as a convener of community service organizations so that we can come together and work proactively to meet the needs of struggling seniors, children and families. So thank you very much for your time, I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
I want us to take this opportunity to just say thank you for feeding the community. It means so much. And a lot of us take for granted that people have enough food, but with the economy that we have now, a lot of people can barely take care of their families. So I appreciate you, I applaud you for all that you're doing and maybe some other councilmen that would like to say anything about it.
It's a huge blessing that you guys are in the, in the community. I know a lot of people every month look forward to the items that you give out. So continue to be a blessing and I know that everything is going to work out as it should. And I know God is going to make a way for your facility and just keep up the great work. I'll go on record and say, whatever you ask for, I'm a yes vote.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you all for your time, appreciate it.
Appreciate you. Resolutions approving, approved revision to personnel policy 2.02 and 5.02.
Mr. Mayor, making a motion to approve.
And I want to second that.
Has a motion...
You going to read that first?
Has a motion, proper second, to approve, all in favor, aye. Opposed by the same sign, ayes, having so carried. Authorizing the mayor and the clerk to execute an intergovernmental agreement regarding water and sewage extension to and LaGrange Calaway Avenue.
Motion to approve, second.
Has a motion, proper second, all in favor, aye. Opposed by the same sign, and it is so carried. Also, first reading of ordinance, Garfield Street, considering one-way traffic on a portion of Garfield Street.
In order to amend the code of the city, to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city, the modified code to provide the traffic on portion of Garfield Street shall be one-way to a field, conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Second reading of ordinance says annexing of seven parcels located on Hamilton Road, adjacent to Sam Walker Drive and Vulcan Material Road.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just point out that these next four items are all related to the same annexation, so you'll do them one, one at a time, but they are all related to the same issue.
All right. You going to vote separate or are we going to vote all at once?
All separate.
In order that the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to annex to the city contiguous real property owned by Troup County Board of Commissioners and located on Hamilton Road, to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, so carried. Res zoning of seven parcels located on Hamilton Road, adjacent to Sam Walker Drive and Vulcan Material Road.
In order that the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the code of the city, to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to classify the use of real estate to be annexed into the city, located on Hamilton Road owned by Troup County Board of Commissioners, to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Move to approve, motion to...
Second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, and it's so carried, passed unanimously. Board and planning and zoning's appeal, recommendation to amend the comprehensive plan charter area map for seven parcels located on Hamilton Road adjacent to Sam Walker Drive and Vulcan Material Road.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, ayes, having so carried. Authorizing the mayor and the clerk to execute...
You look confused up there.
Go ahead, brother.
Authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute an intergovernmental agreement regarding annexation to, of approximately 67.3 acres of property adjacent to Hamilton Road.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, ayes, having so carried.
Welcome to the seat, Troup County.
Exactly. All right, no board adjutant appointments, we have good closing comments, Katie.
Yes, sir. We are looking forward to the mayor's State of the City on Tuesday, February 13th, at the Chambers Early Bird Breakfast at 7:00 AM. If you can't make it in person, the city of LaGrange, of course, will be broadcasting the mayor's State of the City live on our Facebook page. We'll also have mayor's update booklets available free of charge at City Hall starting February 13th. And also ribbon cutting for the city's new website, troupcountiresources.com, will be Wednesday, January 31st at 10:00 AM in front of City Hall. Everyone is welcome.
Seven AM or 7 PM?
AM.
AM.
State of the City going to be sleepy.
Thank you so very much, Katie. I want to share this with the public and those that's watching as well. We have some great council members, they're very passionate about what they're, what they're talking about. And you need to know that they are very passionate and sometimes it gets a little rough, it sounds, it sounds like we're getting a little rough. But each one of us love LaGrange and we want to see the very best in LaGrange. We can't solve all the problems, we try our best to do the very best we can, but if you all work with us, we're going to work with you and make this a great city. Thank you so much for being, that's, that being said, this meeting now adjourned.